All right, everyone. Welcome tonight. I'm going to go ahead and call the regular DeKalb City Council meeting of August 26, 2024 to order. Roll call, please.
Zasada.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Perkins.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Seven present.
And Alderman Smith did let me know ahead of time that he wasn't going to be able to make it tonight. So with that, Captain Hyvee, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You, too, sir.
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item C, Approval of the Agenda. I would take a motion to approve the agenda as is.
So moved.
Second.
I heard Alderman, motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Zazada. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Zasada.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven I.
Excellent. The agenda has been approved. Moving on to D, Presentations. We've got three proclamations tonight. The first is celebrating the 150th anniversary of Joseph F. Glidden's The Winner Barbed-Wire Patent. So whereas in 1873, farmer Joseph F. Glidden, hardware merchant Isaac Elwood, and carpenter Jacob Hage crafted the idea for barbed-wire fencing upon witnessing a fence board with projecting wire points. And whereas on November 24, 1874, Glidden received the patent for his design called The Winner, which in consideration, which is considered the wire that fenced the West. And whereas barbed-wire played a significant role in fencing the American West, it was popular due to its durability and affordability. The significance of this creation and its manufacture in DeKalb prompted its creators to reinvest in the growing city. The barbed-wire barons allowed the railroad to travel through DeKalb, brought the first hospital and library buildings, and encouraged Northern Illinois State Normal School to be built here, which is today's Northern Illinois University. Glidden donated his own farmland for the school to be built on. And whereas, due to this invention and its incredible success, DeKalb earned the moniker Barb City, and high school students are known as the Barb's. And whereas today, Joseph F. Glidden Homestead and Historical Center in DeKalb is proud to preserve the site where Glidden initially used hairpins and a grindstone to make barbed-wire. Two of the campus buildings, the historic house and barn, are listed on the National Historic Register of Historic Places. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, as mayor of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby join the Joseph F. Glidden Homestead and Historical Center in celebrating the 150th anniversary of the barbed-wire patent and encourage all citizens to visit the Barbed-Wire Expo at Northern Illinois University's Altfield Hall during the Barbed-Wire Weekend from September 27 through September 29, 2024, where an extensive collection of barbed-wire collections will be on display with history demonstrations. More information can be found at www.barbwireweekend.com. Let's give a round of applause for this monumental anniversary in our community. And I believe someone is here to receive the proclamation?
I'm here.
Oh, there you are, Alar. Excellent. Come on up to the front. We'll get a whole group picture here. Council, if you wouldn't mind joining?
He can't see Scott. He can't see you.
This way.
All right, here we have three, two, one.
Excellent. Thanks for all your hard work. Yeah, look forward to it. And let us know.
Agent.
Why?
And by all means, you're more than welcome to stay for our meeting, but you also don't have to. I know you all are incredibly busy, so we don't see it as any disrespect if you want to go about your evening at this time. Yeah, have a great night. All right, we've got another proclamation, celebrating DeKalb's senior citizens. So whereas on October 19, 1988, President Ronald Reagan signed Proclamation 5847 to increase awareness of the issues senior citizens face and recognize their contributions to society. Whereas there are approximately 62 million adults aged 65 and older living in the United States, which is 18% of the nation's population. Whereas it's important to recognize senior citizens who spend their lives contributing to society and bettering the community around them. And whereas many senior citizens continue to serve as leaders, mentors, and volunteers throughout the community. And whereas the knowledge and experience senior citizens pass on to us continues to benefit all. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, as mayor of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby encourage all DeKalb citizens to spend some time with an older family member, visit a local nursing home to spread joy to the residents, or volunteer for projects that benefit senior citizens. Can I get a round of applause for all of our senior citizens in our community? And I don't know if there's anyone here to accept this proclamation? Nope. I know exactly who to bring it to this week. All right, our last proclamation is Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month for September 2024. So whereas ovarian cancer is the fifth-leading cause of cancer deaths of women in the United States and causes more deaths than any other gynecologic cancer. Whereas in the United States, a woman's lifetime risk of being diagnosed with ovarian cancer is about 1 in 78. Whereas all women are at risk for ovarian cancer, but approximately 20% of women who are diagnosed with ovarian cancer have a hereditary predisposition to ovarian cancer, which places them at even higher risk. Whereas the lack of an early detection test for ovarian cancer combined with its vague symptoms mean that approximately 80% of cases of ovarian cancer are detected at an advanced stage. Whereas improved awareness of the symptoms of ovarian cancer by the public and healthcare providers can lead to quicker diagnosis. Whereas ongoing investments in ovarian cancer research and education and awareness efforts are critical to closing these gaps and improving survivorship for women with ovarian cancer. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, as mayor of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim September 24, September, sorry, September 2024 as National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month in the city of DeKalb to increase public awareness of ovarian cancer. There's also a postcard out there when you all first walked in with additional information on this important topic, if you would like to find out more about it as well. And I'm not sure if there's anyone here to receive the proclamation? All right. No worries. I know exactly who to give that to. All right. Moving on to public participation, we have one person, Mark Charba. And as a reminder, sir, you have three minutes.
Unique situation tonight. We have all three announced mayor candidates in the room here tonight, so I'm glad this information is going to be presented so you can all hear. A letter from the Illinois Attorney General's Office dated August 2nd was shared with the mayor council and the press and the city legal staff. The Attorney General's Office has determined that this council violated the Open Meetings Act at its February 26 meeting. It's official. To refresh those who were not present, during public comment, a speaker identified as Ms. Martinez in paperwork filed by the AG office exercised her right to speak for the allotted three-minute public comment period. Ms. Martinez spoke about discrimination on the part of the mayor and city officials, which is her absolute right. The letter from the Attorney General states, "The video recording of the meeting establishes that Ms. Martinez was not allowed to speak for the three-minute time period allowed by code, not allowed to complete her public comment. The video recording shows that Mayor Barnes interrupted Ms. Martinez numerous times when she stated the names of individuals she was accusing of misconduct. When he disagreed with the content of her remarks, Mayor Barnes called Ms. Martinez out of order and moved to vote to recess during public comment, which was approved, caused the microphone to be turned off before she completed her comments. The meeting minutes this city council approved state, Mayor Barnes asked for the motion to recess the meeting. Alderman Perkins motioned to recess the meeting, seconded by Alderman Larson. By voice vote, a majority of the council members presented voted to recess the meeting. Alderman Zazada dissented. Mayor Barnes recessed the meeting at 6:17 PM. The only recorded dissent at the meeting was by Alderman Zazada." Thank you. "No one else. The meeting minutes were never amended to correct the comments from Alderman afterwards that stated they also dissented. The Attorney General goes on to state that the actions of the council in interfering with Ms. Martinez's address to the council violated the council's recorded and established rules, which allow a member of the public to address the council regarding the concerns." Of particular concerns here, and very scary, is the response the Attorney General received from the city's hired legal firm that argued that Mayor Barnes properly curtailed Ms. Martinez's address because she, quote-unquote, "engaged in duplicative, disruptive, insulting, defamatory personal attack upon the city manager, and it was reasonably necessary to protect a significant governmental interest in maintaining civility and decorum during the public comment sessions of its meetings." However, the Attorney General's Office states that whether a comment is defamatory or not requires a legal judgment that a tort has been committed, including the finding that the alleged offending statement is false, that the council does not have the legal authority to judge. So I'm pretty sad that Mayor Barnes, Cohen, I should say Cohen, Barb, and Greg, you guys started this and you are responsible for this. It's on record.
And if you continue reading that letter, everyone, the Attorney General did say that, "I apologize at the next meeting and let that individual speak their entire piece, and there was no further action required from them." All right. Moving on to appointments. Number one, I have appointing Linda Schreigler to the Citizens Environmental Commission for the completion of a two-year term through December 31, 2025. Can I have a motion to approve Linda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
The appointment of Linda Schreigler has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item G, the Consent Agenda. Number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of July 22, 2024, minutes of the regular city council meeting of August 12, 2024, accounts payable and payroll through August 26, 2024, in the amount of $3,270,862.20. And number four, Freedom of Information Act FOIA, July 2024. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Zazada. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
The consent agenda has been approved. All right. Moving on to Agenda Item H, we're going to have a public hearing for the distant early warning public meeting and consideration of the proposed South Fourth Corridor TIF redevelopment project plan and area. So we don't do a lot of TIFs. It's a new thing, and obviously you all have received a letter. This is the beginning of notification of what is going to be transpiring, what we would like to have happen on the south side. What I want to do is I'm going to have the city manager give a brief overview of TIF. What does it mean? Why is your house in red? And what does that mean to you as a taxpayer? And what I think after that, I'd like to do, open it up maybe 10 or 15 minutes Q and A. If you've got a question, come up to the podium, ask it, we'll give a response. But I think, because you never know sometimes. We want to do something, there's a public hearing, and no one shows, and then you do something and you get a whole crowd. I think, and it was Alderman Perkins's recommendation, I think what we'll probably do is a special, like, town hall on TIF in the near future here, just to have all the city resources available. We could even have our city engineer there and whoever would need to be to really maybe do a whole deep dive in TIF and what does it mean to everyone. Because we do have other business tonight that we've got to conduct and we've got to get through a bunch of stuff, but I would like to at least have each and every one of you walk away with more information than you have, hopefully bring a little clarity to what I know is kind of murky and a little bit gray. And then, like I said, do about 15 minutes. If someone has a question, raise your hand, we'll get those answers. But I'll promise and commit to you that we will do a dedicated town hall around TIF itself. We could either do it here or we'll do it in the neighborhood. I'll talk with some residents in the area, work with Alderman Perkins and Alderman Powell, where it might be a good location that's convenient for everyone if this is in a convenient place. So with that, city manager, you want to kind of kick things off for us?
Sure. Happy to. And I was just going to reserve comments, let the public speak tonight, but I have a feeling. How many of you know what TIF is? Good. And how many of you have read some of the background to this? So I'll adjust my, okay. Some have, some haven't. So I'll just take maybe three to five minutes and just give an overview of what TIF is and then why we're talking about it tonight, and then I'll yield to the people in the audience. So TIF, it's not a fight you had with somebody. It's tax increment financing. And as soon as you roll that off your lips, what does that mean? Taxes we know about. Property taxes we know about. Increment, I'll get to. It's a difference between a starting point and where you are now and where you may be later on. And financing, we know about that. And so why do we care about TIF on the South Fourth Street Corridor? Well, I assume people who are here tonight are here in their own behalf or in behalf of people that they know who maybe couldn't be here and have property and received a letter, right? Most of you received a letter. There are about 200 parcels that are included in what we're going to be talking about tonight and for the next three months. And it just wasn't possible to pick up the phone and start dialing everybody. So what we've wanted to do at this point, and this is not a formal hearing, but send everybody a letter and we got the desired response. Come on out and let's have a first, in fact, in the law, this is called an early warning public meeting. It's not called a public hearing, but we don't have a public meeting as a category for discussion on our agenda. Okay, so far? All right. So what does this mean? Well, we know that the corridor, particularly as you're driving up and down Fourth Street, South Fourth Street, from Taylor down to I-88, used to be a pretty vibrant corridor, but it's been about 25 years since we have seen that level of commercial activity. And if you do the numbers and do a little bit of the data, you can see that in the, for the last five consecutive years, the rise in the incremental value of your properties has been lower, substantially lower than the average rise across the city. And in 15 of the last 20 years, that has been the case. A couple blips here and there. So does that mean you're in a blighted area? No, it does not. And in fact, we hired a consultant, that's something that's typically done in the early stages to look at whether something will qualify for TIF. Their judgment was that you would qualify as a conservation area. So what does that mean? Sorry. Every time you make a statement on TIF, you raise another question. Conservation just means that there are property values and there are public features that ought to be more carefully conserved. And the question is, who pays? Right? It's always, who pays? And you've been doing your best, if you're here tonight, you've probably been doing your best, you know, keeping the roof up, seal coating your driveway every once in a while, painting the house, keeping yards mowed and so forth. And if you're a business, you've hopefully been trying to, struggling to keep that open. But it also means that the public streets have been kept up. How many of you love the condition of your public streets down there? Oh, well. We got one. And you're on South Seventh Streets, right? Yeah. So obviously, there's work to do, and we've been talking about streets all around the city here for years, and most especially in the last couple months again, as part of our budget cycle. Okay. But what is this tax increment financing? Well, it's a tool by which governments, with the collaboration and cooperation of the affected property owners, can spur redevelopment. It's not usually the first tool that's used in that direction, but even in the law, it says, "But for this," it's not likely that there will be a turnaround. There will have to be something done, a public push, pulse, I guess, to get private redevelopment completed. And in some cases, public redevelopment, because, you know, streets unfortunately will say something about your house whether you like it or not, correct? All right. How are we doing so far? How does it work? Are you going to pay more taxes? There are a lot of good questions that can be asked, and some of you are thinking of them and probably came here to talk about it. It doesn't raise your taxes. Now, if your neighborhood was improved as a result of what we're going to be talking about here tonight and for the next couple of months, and it's improved in the way of the look of the properties, the activity of the properties, we don't have a lot of vacant properties, but we have a few. We also have one area, the old Protano salvage yard, which still needs some TLC. Some of that was done, more of that needs to be done. Even if it was to be used for a nice park, some of that still has to be done. The job was not finished. So there are some public improvements that need to be done so that your properties are enhanced. And you're paying taxes now, but your property tax is not going into the street repairs that we do every year. Everybody here can see that is the case. All right. We also didn't invent this, and bear with me here, but in Illinois, tax increment financing was introduced back in 1977 by the first mayor Daley in Chicago. Right now, there are 49 states that have TIF legislation in one form or another, and just in the state of Illinois, there are about 1,496 TIF districts right now and 537 Illinois municipalities. So a lot of TIF going on in the state of Illinois. We don't get a lot of federal dollars. We get some federal dollars for bridge repairs and some big street projects like Peace Road, get some assistance. The airport, we get some assistance. There's no longer any federal revenue sharing, as we used to know it in the 70s and 80s, to help with these things, okay? So states are on their own in that respect, and cities and small towns and villages around the country, and particularly in Illinois, have had to pretty much rely on their own resources. So how does this work? Well, if a TIF is enacted by the council at the consultation with you all, representatives of all the taxing bodies that make up your tax bill and take some out of your pocket, obviously, proportionally, if that is approved, then that will be the first year, the starting point for the TIF district. They can run by law in the state of Illinois for 23 years. Now, it's up to the city council and on a recommendation or on the advising consent, really, of our joint review board, which is the other taxing bodies represented, to decide whether you want to go the whole 23 years, you want to go a little less, you know, you want to do the job and then get in and get out. But what does it mean to you? Well, it just means that you're going to continue to pay your taxes as you did this year and you're going to do next year, hopefully, and what you've done in recent years. But that money is collected by the county, right? You write to the county on your check, and instead of distributing it as always, every dollar that comes in back to the taxing bodies on a pro rata basis, there is a floor basically put under it, and the rest, the increment from this year going forward, is put in one pile. It's over here. So if it was, I'll throw a number out. If it was $10 million in 2024, then in 2025, let's say it's $10,250,000. That $250,000 goes over here. And what's that to be used for? That's to be used for the improvement that we've been talking about, private rehab. There is, as we go further into this, there's background, by the way, tonight, if you have a computer, if you go to the city of DeKalb website and you type that in, you'll want to go to economic development, you can put it in the little search bar, and you'll see some things, and you'll see tax increment financing. Go to that, and you can see a little bit more about TIF generally. But if you want to know about what was before the council tonight, its background, just go to, again, the website, go to city government, go to meetings, and you'll see on tonight's meeting about four pages of background and charts and tables to show what it might mean for your neighborhoods. Okay? So over time, what do we think will be gathered on an annual basis for...
Bill, real quick, can I say one thing? Great explanation. The way I always looked at it, let's say at your house, you paid $4,000 or $5,000. Let's just say $5,000 in property taxes last year. When the TIF happens and your tax bill goes up to $5,100, that $100 gets put in a bucket of money that we use to incentivize a developer to work on the streets, things like that. And collectively, all of you, you'll pay your $5,100 bucks, but it's just that increment, as Bill said, that extra $100 that year, and maybe you're paying $5,200 next year, then that 200 goes into that bucket, and we use that as hopefully what's going to be a catalyst for redevelopment on the south side. So that's kind of how that piece works. Sorry. Keep going.
That's all right. And I made a general reference to that. Okay. So I'm just going to stop here because people came with questions, and I don't care if you've asked questions that I may have tried to cover and I didn't do it adequately. We'd love to hear them. So one last thing. So this is the beginning, as I said, of a process that's going to take us into November. It used to be you had one crack at this, one bite of the apple. You'd had a public hearing, you could stand up there. Under public hearing, you can speak as long as you want on that topic. It could be not just three minutes, it could be five, it could be longer than that. But that was it. And you could, of course, talk to your older persons who represent you, the mayor, and any of our elected officials, you could talk to staff. But in terms of getting some public discussion going, that was it. We sent one letter out, and y'all come, and this is what it's going to be. We're doing it now. As the mayor said, we've been kicking this around, this is above and beyond what the TIF law requires, but I think it'd be great if after tonight, you still have a lot of questions. You're always welcome to call me, the city manager. You can find my number, my direct line on the website, and I'll give it to you. It's 748-2391. So write that down. And I'm happy to address those questions, but you're going to get another chance. We have a meeting of our joint review board, which is, as I mentioned, all the local taxing bodies represented by one or two people come to a meeting. Normally, it's every three months. We just had one in the last month, but we're going to do a special one at the end of September, when more information can be thrown out there. Along the way, we may send you another mailing, just to say, here's, we've been listening and here are some things you ought to consider. And then ultimately, it goes to, now, once you get on this train, this train goes according to state statutes, so we're throwing in some extra distractions for you along the way. A few more hills, a few more nice things to look at and things to think about, more important. And when we get to the final hearing, hopefully, most of the questions, you'll be bored with it. That would be ideal. Yeah, I know, I know, I know. We've heard that. But at this point, you can't say that, and I realize that, and everybody up there realizes that, and we want to begin the discussion tonight.
And like I said, we will do a town hall, which will be great. Just, that'll be a more casual, just back and forth, back and forth. We could take all the time that we need at that point, because our goal, we want to be as transparent as possible in this, but the motivation here is how can we bring redevelopment to the south side? Finally, the city of DeKalb, we're setting our sights on the South Fourth Street Corridor. And what can we do to improve, make it more vibrant, more opportunities, restaurants, grocery stores? Again, we can't control that, we can't force anyone to come, but this allows it to be a catalyst for change that could happen on the south side. So that's our motivation, that's our goal, and TIF is one of the ways that we can go about doing just that. So at this point, like I said, since this is a, it's a public meeting, you called it, right? Not a public hearing, but I would like to give, if we need 15 minutes, we'll take 15 minutes, but if anyone has a question, come on up to the podium, ask it, and if we can at this point, we'll give you the answer. And if not, we'll make sure we provide the answer at the town hall. And I'll also commit, if you Google "mayor of DeKalb, Illinois," important, "DeKalb, Illinois," you'll find my email address and phone number. Just reach out to me. I'm happy to pick up the phone, call you, and talk about it further as well. So without further ado, would someone like to come up and ask a question? Yes. Yeah, if you can come to the podium, that way folks at home can hear you.
Hi, Tim Detwiler, owner of property at 1140 South Seventh Street. What kind of TIF improvements are typical covered under the TIF...
Good question. What are eligible, in other words? So it's rehab primarily on the private side. Rehab meaning, it could be water service lines, you have old orangeburg, excuse me, in your yard, that some people in the neighborhood had that from when it was put in in the 60s.
Yeah, if you can come to the podium, that way folks at home can hear you.
Hi, Tim Detweiler, owner of property at 1140 South 7th Street. What kind of TIF improvements are typical covered under the TIF...
Good question. What are eligible, in other words? So it's rehab primarily on the private side. Rehab meaning, could be, could be water service lines. You have old orange, orangeburg, excuse me, in your yard. Some people in the neighborhood had that from when it was put in in the sixties. How many of you have had any of that? Well, good. Yeah, one. It's not, not a pleasant process. But that can happen. Roof repairs.
How about an industrial building?
So there are some industrial zone properties in the, did you see the map, sir?
Yes.
Okay. And if you have, you have one in there, obviously, that's why you're here. Similar things. What we can't do is fund the, what's growing out of the ground, the new part. Another, we can't help you build an addition with that, but we can help you rehab, rehabilitate, that's the word, rehabilitate the private portions of the, of the area. And on the public side, that's going to be mostly streets and sometimes it's, sometimes you've got a storm catch basin that floods your street after every two-inch rain. And it's just been too much to deal with in terms of an annual budget, a little bit of repair money here and there for those things. So maybe it's time we have something. But that has to be balanced so that the extraordinary amount that might, I'm not going to even say extraordinary, but the amount, the better part of the amount that's raised by the TIF should go onto private rehab. No question about it.
And private rehab, do you mean improving appearance and function?
Function, first of all, you know, appearance is easier to deal with. Appearance, though, is more along the lines, sometimes, of deferred maintenance. When we have a limited budget annually, it's better to fix the things that are keeping you from doing your, your work the way it should be done. You gotta, I, it, it could be that, again, there's a, there's a failure somewhere on the, on the building structure. There's, there's a roof that's fallen. If it's industrial, there could be heating HVAC issues, that kind of a thing that would qualify.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to let the audience know too, that there's the TIF Act under the Illinois Municipal Code. You can Google it. There are, the act itself specifies what are project development eligible costs. And if you want to, the, the site for that is 65ILCS5 hyphen 11 hyphen 74.4.
Really?
But the best thing to do is probably do is Google "TIF eligible redevelopment projects." It gives a list, and the statute's pretty long of what those redevelopment costs are. And you could tell just from all the hyphens that the statute itself is long. But it is, you know, there's, there's specifically outlined things that you can use TIF money for. And, and, you know, the city manager summarized some of those.
And I'll say, in the background that I said is available to you, if you didn't get a copy of it before you came in here, you go on the website, you can see that this meeting agenda has four pages, including a table that gives you 10 categories that would apply, some of which we don't do much about and, and we haven't in our history. I think it's, as I said earlier, our councils have generally wanted to get the money into private rehab.
And realize, all the funds that get generated, we'll never have enough money to do everything everyone wants. So it'll be prioritized based off of project by project basis, come before council, and we'll be the ones that'll be making some of the direction on where the investment's going to go. Because what we want to do is make the largest impact to everyone in the community. And we'll focus on projects that are that. Since you talked about commercial, I'm sure the question is, there's a lot of homeowners here. Can you just talk about the residential side, what, what someone might be able to use TIF money for as well?
Yeah, I was just hitting at that. So first of all, you can also see on our website, there's a map here. I don't know what you'd call that shape. You see the, I don't know what color that is. It's been copied too much. It's like a kind of pink, a little bit cream colored. It's look, you're thinking about, what, what happened? Did their, did a pen slip from their hand or was, no? There are properties that are not substantially different from other properties south of Taylor and between First Street and 11th Street, say. But then there are other areas that are on roadways or are, are near the core that could benefit most directly from, say, commercial or residential upgrades. And the industrial, the gentleman that was just up before...
Front row.
Said that, and he's right, there are some industrial properties on the east side of 7th. And there are areas that, that are zoned for more heavy activity south of Taylor, excuse me, south of Fairview going down to I-88. All right, so residential. We've, we've done some work on commercial properties under our, we call it an architectural improvement program in the downtown area. We put money into roofs, we put money into parking lots.
Tuck pointing.
Tuck pointing. So you buy a property and there's two major concerns. Is the roof tight? And how's that heat, how's that furnace or, you know, boiler or whatever it is? You gotta, you gotta stay warm and you, so those are essential and those are included under eligible costs. Yes, sir.
Can you come up to the podium, sir, so everyone can hear you at home?
Thank you. My name's David Zobares. I have a property on Fourth Street. If you walk around my neighborhood, you will see this plastic, like PVC pipe or corrugated pipe running out of the homes from their septic systems or their basements or whatever. And there's more than just one. I mean, I'm, I'm not the only one. And the, the city rules are you cannot run a pipe across your sidewalk into the street to empty out after a heavy rain. We've been getting some heavy rains and the, the depth and the size of my properties on, the drainage, the French drainage kind of installations are failing. And I've noticed that I'm not the only owner of property that has this. So as far as the TIF money goes, and I'm not trying to confuse things, but since there are so many houses, wouldn't it be proper for, like, I'm in the 5th Ward. So maybe if somebody like Mr. Pollack could go around to our neighbors and go, hey, I noticed you've got this pipe sticking out. Is it from your septic? Is it from your, your plumbing? What, where's it from? Will DeKalb come back and say, we will help you get this fixed?
That's a great idea.
So that you don't run this corrugated pipe over your lawn, over your sidewalk, into the street?
That's a great idea. So what you're talking about is like a neighborhood, it might be more than one neighborhood where, and I know for a fact, because I've been down, talked to homeowners over the last five years, and they've said, look, my sump pump gets the water out of my basement, but then I've got no place to put it except in my backyard. And after a while, I can't mow on a, on a rainy month and, and I don't want to put it in my neighbor's yard. And there isn't, guess what? There isn't a storm manhole on my side of the street. So what could be done? Well, that is a good example of a public works project that could be done with TIF money. It could be done with other monies too, so that it's not just TIF, say, but that is something that would benefit the private homeowners on the block by a lot. And where did you say you live on?
I'm over at 25 Lakis.
Okay, Lakis, yeah. And you're not alone, sir. There, there are, and that, that corrugated pipe is just an extension to the line that comes out of the basement that takes it further to the back of the yard. But every time you mow, you gotta do something with it and, or sometimes somebody runs through the yard, knocks it and knocks in the neighbor's yard, and you get a call after a heavy rain. What's your water doing in my yard? So I get it. That's, that's a good example. What we've done, sir, is in other parts of town, with limited budget overall for stormwater repairs every year, is we can, we can, you don't have to then, we can run some smaller feeder lines in the parkway behind the curb, between the curb and the sidewalk, that you can plug into. Put a tee in there, you can plug into. I'm not going to design it here, but that's a good example of a collaboration between the government and neighborhoods that it, by, by house, it may not seem like a lot of money, but overall, in terms of TIF, but for you, it's a heck of a relief.
And that, that's a great idea. And that's where, over time, reach out to Alderman-Paul, Alderman-Purkins, or reach out to myself, ideas, thoughts that you have. I'll, I'll go on the record as saying, I have no idea, no one has reached out, there is no project that has been proposed or suggested to me that involves TIF money at this point. We really are, it's a blank slate. And it's going to take all of us together, trying to figure out what is the best use of TIF so we can, again, use it as a catalyst for South Fourth. And we're going to have some time here because even four months, when this is all approved and done, if it does, it's not like all of a sudden, there's millions of dollars in this kitty and we can start doing projects. It's going to take a while to build up the necessary funds to really make a significant impact. So we're all going to have plenty of time to be able to reach out to our Alderman, advocate for our particular circumstance as well.
Yeah, just like to make one quick comment. I think that's a great example because as I'm Alderman of the 4th Ward, and as I was talking about this and thinking about this, one of my questions was always, you know, we need some work there on that side of town. We haven't had any substantive work there forever. You know, it's been a four lane from Taylor out to past Fairview as long as I can remember. And as I started thinking about this, if we approach it from a round-up perspective, a one-off perspective with a one house, this house, that house, it's tough to get any traction. So that's where I went to, to Bill and, and the mayor and fished for options. What can we do? And I think TIF is a great tool where we can consolidate some things and then prioritize what we want to do with it to improve the neighborhood. But it was a way of funding those things.
Yep.
You know, and, and I think the mayor had the, had, it's a blank slate, you know, it's, it's our neighborhood, you know, I think we, we have the biggest voice and we want to do with it.
Absolutely.
But one of the key questions is, is well, how? How are we going to do that? What tools are available? And I think this is a great tool to do that. So that's a great example because I don't, I don't know if there are other opportunities like that. My grandparents lived over on Charter and they've had trouble with their basement forever. You know, I remember as a kid going over there when it was literally flooded to the rafters. And they're like, well, what do we do? Well, take everything out first, you know, drain it and take everything out. So just, I just wanted to, to talk about that because it's, it's that type of thing that I think creates opportunity for, for development there.
And then the mayor's right about one thing. We go back to that question, who pays and where's the money going to be and how much is it going to be? In the first year, if, if this was done in '24, in the first year, is the first accrual year is '25. You start with zero and by the end of the year, there are usually two TIF allocations for us, or is it coming four maybe from the county? I'm looking at our finance director. Two, two big ones and maybe some incremental ones for the end of the year. So it won't be till the end of the year. So a '25 project is probably not any offing, a '26. And in the first year, you might have, we have TIF 3 downtown, which is, which is a small TIF like this one will be. And we had about $250,000 in the first year. So that can go pretty quickly on, on various things, but we could get a start. And, and long before we get to that point, as you all were saying, we collaborate on a, a working plan. These are at least the priorities that we can think of 30 more things to do, but the highest priorities, priorities year in and year out are going to be these things.
Another question. Yes, Mr. Sharvat.
This actually affects the area that I live in, south end of town, Mr. Perkins Ward. I encourage everybody to Google disadvantages of TIF. I am firmly against this, even though I live in the area. If you look up TIF, it's referred to as a little more than a subsidy for the private sector, which takes away your tax dollars from schools and other important services. Think about it. The money that would be going to the school dis, it's going to hurt the school district probably the most. They are the highest dollar figure on your taxes every year. So the school district is not just going to sit aside and say, okay, we'll just throw all the money toward South Fourth Street over here and not have it affect our budget. What they're going to do, since they are not getting the increment, they're going to further have to figure out how to raise taxes. Your taxes will still go up. It takes money away from the schools. It also takes away money from the park district. It also takes away money from the city and from the library as well. You're going to have to make up the shortfall. It's going to be funneled into this area, into private development. Now, one example of a TIF project, I don't know if you've seen some of the private development. Has anybody seen what's at the old city hall on South Fourth Street, the giant white building that's a cinder block? It looks like a prison. That is one of the, one of the things that TIF brought us. Now granted, I'm sure it's very nice inside. The neighbors were promised nice red brick on the outside, but I'm sorry, everybody makes fun of how that building looks. It looks like a prison. Another disadvantage of TIF is, and if you Google this, it forces people to move away from maybe unsightly developments that might pop up. Let's say you get, I, I hope the city's not going to try to build a factory there or approve funds for a private factory, but you could have an ugly development, maybe a store that's just god awful, right in your backyard. The problem is, you don't get a say in this. They are the ones that decide where the money goes. You don't have a say where this extra TIF money is going. And that is a huge problem with tax increment financing. If you follow the city for a long time, and boy, have I done so, it seems that the money seems to go to the same developers. I don't recall one instance, and Mr. Perkins, maybe you can tell me, where has TIF money gone to private citizens? When has it, it's gone to businesses?
Dig a little deeper, Mark. They're out there and you know they're out there.
What private, what private...
Don't be disingenuous with what you're doing here, lobbying for something you don't like. State your opinion and move along.
Agreed.
Everybody else gets to ask questions. I have the same right to do so, Mr. Perkins.
You're not asking a question.
You're not asking questions.
My question is, I'm asking you.
You're lecturing.
I am asking you.
You're lecturing.
I'm asking you a question, Mr. Perkins. Where has TIF, you've been on this council for a while.
The Bayeze property.
Tell me where.
The Bayeze property on Lake...
I'm talking about residential property. People have residential concerns about this.
Here we go.
Eduardo's.
What's that?
Eduardo's.
Why are you...
The apartments above Eduardo's.
The apartments above, that's owned by?
The Bayeze.
It's not owned by private home, we're talking about private homeowners. That's a business. The Bayeze own a business. See, you're diverting from the question.
Appreciate him, Mr. Sharvat.
No, you, this is a public hearing, so this is treated much different, Mr. Barnes. I know you're propagating for, running for mayor, but people have the right to have their say and we're going to do it.
Okay, well, let's do this, you guys. Listen, we can't, this is what we can't do. We're trying to do something to help the area. And there are going to be a whole lot of advantages and disadvantages. There's, there's pros and cons of everything. And I'm not saying you're wrong or anything, and I'm not saying we're right, but the only way to even fix that side of town is to try to at least address or try to look deeper into something like this, TIF. Like, we have to understand, that whole South Side has been nothing. Now, I know some of you guys have been here a lot longer than me. I've been here 30 years and I delivered over there for almost 26 for UPS. And I've seen that area go down drastically and, you know, nothing's happening and there's no plans for nothing, you know, for it to even get any better. So I just think at some point, we have to try to, you know, get forward progress just to, to see if we can help that side because we don't want everything just tore down into Kalb. If we're getting all these big businesses to come over here on the South Side, well, guess what? There's a lot of people that work at Facebook or Candy that don't live in DeKalb. And guess where they're going to go on their lunch break? Fourth Street, that whole area. And we want that to look as good as it possibly can. So maybe they will want to live here. So I'm not saying I have all the answers and we have all the answers, but I'm just saying this is a start. And of course, we got to iron out a lot of wrinkles, Mr. Sharvat, like you know, but at the end of the day, let's not get everybody scared and nervous about...
No, but I want people, we're point, we're painting a lovely picture. We're not showing the residents. May I speak?
May I speak? I'd like to say something. So for my capstone in economics at NIU, I studied TIF specifically. And the foremost expert on TIF in the state is David Merriman. I spoke with him personally. I studied this extensively, trying to understand whether or not this was worthwhile. And the findings are this, and there's a policy paper with the Lincoln Institute that's like two or three pages long that you can review, that really spells it out. The findings are this, it's sort of 50/50. Sometimes it works great, sometimes it doesn't. But specifically, looking at DeKalb as a case study and looking at how it has been effective for downtown, I think is a good example of how it has worked successfully in our specific community. So I want us to be looking at objective, solid evidence communicating these ideas. So what you're saying, Mr. Charvat, makes a lot of sense. And it can certainly be argued the way that you're saying it, and I understand that. However, we have seen here that it has worked out well and it has increased EAV. And if you want to talk about, because that is the bottom line goal of TIF, is to increase EAV, estimated assessed value. And if you took a look at our entire community and the EAV and how it has increased in the last, what is it, five years? Since we started having, we started talking hard about TIF, our EAV has gone through the roof. And I'm not saying that.
It's also caused taxes to increase as well. But I'm not, that's a different discussion. I want to stay on focus here.
Well, I think we're good now. I wanted to leave 15 minutes for Q and A. We're well beyond that at that point.
Can I ask one question?
To have more questions and comments, so.
May I ask one question?
Yes.
I'm really excited about this map and I know how these maps are designed and such. But I don't know how they choose specific spots. And I'm really excited that I see two schools in here, a rec center, a fire station, a municipal building. I am curious why Huntley Middle School isn't in it.
So it, two reasons. One is there, as you mentioned, there are three school buildings in there. And, yeah, so the school admin center and there are two grade schools.
Oh, right, right, right.
Founder's School and Lincoln School. And the other thing is the middle school is surrounded by what? A sea of green, if you will. So we, and I think as the mayor said earlier, we can't do everything for everybody all the time. This is, there's going to be a modest generator. And so there's a substantial opportunity for the school district to find some capital projects that might qualify.
And so theoretically, it might be more harmful to have Huntley in the district?
No, I didn't say that.
No.
Be in there, but then now you've got another, now you're overloading.
It's a lot, like it's a huge thing.
The public side, which is the, is one of the possibilities, but not the principal one, which is private rehab. Like the gentleman who's up here proposing a neighborhood, some pump connection program, that, now that's private rehab.
Yep.
Sir?
Yeah, my name's Patrick. I've been in my house for about 27 years, right before KFC closed and it's been vacant. Why that building, it's torn down is beyond me. But what you're proposing on the map is a pretty small area for those of us that live in this area to put out costs for what kind of TIF money you want to put out. What is going to be guidelines for how much our taxes are going to increase? One, I put a lot of money into my own home to make it nice. My taxes are higher. I'm not going to live here that much longer. I want to be able to sell my house. You guys are going to raise my taxes and I won't be able to sell and move.
So the tax argument, and Billy chime in please, but the tax argument is a complicated one. But ultimately, if we look at the last four years, our tax rate, if you take all the taxing bodies, right, and your aggregate tax rate, what you pay in the city of DeKalb based off of the value of your home, was at 11.5%, went to 11.1, went to 10.1, and we're at 9.4 this year and we're projected to maybe be 8.4, 8.5, if we get all the taxing bodies on board, which we've been doing too, to continue to low the multiple, that percentage you're paying in property taxes to try and drive it down. When people, and I've seen it online, have talked about, well, if the district, school district isn't going to get their money. By the way, the school district signs off on this. They're part of the whole conversation. If the school district doesn't get that increment year over year over year, well, natural reaction would be, well, of course they're going to raise my taxes because they want that money. We're in a unique position right now with the unprecedented historic economic development that's happening on the south side of town. All the taxes that are generated from property there, school district gets over 60% of those. So they have been doing a great job lowering the amount of their levy, which affects your individual tax rate because there has been just so much money coming in from the south side. So just because they're doing, we're doing a TIF in the area, it doesn't mean that they're going to come and now want that 100 bucks back. So you didn't, or they didn't get to collect that 100 dollars on that $5,000 I was telling you about. They're not going to raise you by 100 bucks to try and close that particular gap. They could, but again, we have such incredible tax revenue coming in from the south side that I don't think that enters into the equation.
One comment real quick, I'm here too. On the taxing question, the individual taxing authorities get their voice in this through the JRB, the Joint Review Board that Bill was talking about. So all of the taxing entities meet, they're going to be meeting coming up. And they will, they'll buy off on the concept if we, if we're in and we want to do this, they'll have to buy off on it before we're able to do it. So they'll have a voice. So it's not, regardless of how some people may lead you to believe that this is all being done in a smoky back room, this is all going to be right out.
You're only looking at, I don't remember the number. 199 properties? Put 100 bucks on that. Let's make it 200. You put 100 bucks on each one of our properties, that's only 20 grand. It's nothing. What are you going to get for 20 grand?
You mean the money that we're going to, that'll go into that TIF fund?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's houses that'll be.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, please.
Okay. So you paid taxes in the last year based on levies that were done by the various taxing bodies. You understand that. You're, if you did nothing to add to your, you didn't add a deck, you didn't add, you didn't raise the roof, you didn't add a room. Last year, the county, excuse me, township, that's us, you live in DeKalb Township, raised the value of your value for your property by.
9.5%.
Just under 10%. This year, guess what? It's going up 14.6%. We haven't made any decision. TIF had nothing to do with that. The year before that, it was about 6.7%. So how is that? Is that fellow who works at the township office, Gord? No, it's state law. State law says that the assessors are supposed to equalize across the county the impact of the economy on the value of property. And how do they do that? They look at the average price of all the properties sold. So you can say we only built, we might by the end of the year build 20 new homes. But, and that's true, I hope that's the case. But there's another 150 homes or more, I don't have the exact number yet, but by the end of the year, at least that many, that were sold and you didn't even see a sign of. It's a seller's market right now. And you know, if you know anybody who's sold their house recently, that they're selling way above what they thought they were worth four years ago. That's driving your taxes up right now because it's driving up the value of your house, which even if there was no increase in the levy that this body does and the other 10 do on your property tax bill, unfortunately, you're, or fortunately, depending on, if you're a seller right now, you're thinking, well, that's good. My value went up, I'm going to get that money because there are people willing to pay it. But at some point, that will level off and it's starting to, as you know. So that's affecting your taxes. It's not tax increment financing, sir.
I understand that, but my taxes are going to go up because of what you just said about houses selling for a higher rate. Then you're going to put more money on top of that for a TIF.
Okay, so here's, maybe is the answer. If it's successful, your neighborhood will look better. Will that drive prices? Yeah, but you don't know how, if at all. And that will have a lot to do also with how you present your house, you know, paint the front door, do all those things, keep the yard well. And the streets only go so far. A nice looking street helps. It indicates, huh, there's not much crime in this area. Everybody seems to be doing okay.
I understand all that. You have three schools also. You also have three schools in the TIF area.
Yes, sir.
They're not contributing.
But you will pay, somebody was saying earlier, you'll pay. You will pay one way or another if they can't bring buses in on their parking lots or if the roof is leaking, they're going to, they're going to use property tax.
I understand that, but this is a very small group. And those schools don't pull from just this group.
So that, you mentioned it earlier, I think that's a very valid point. So how come it's this size and how about a little bit bigger? Originally, we had that hole in the donut filled in, all of that. But to comply with state law and to establish a conservation area, 50% or more, at least 50% in other words, of every property has to be considered deteriorating. And I'm happy to say that's not true.
Oh, I got a couple houses across the street that's not part of this.
Yeah, but out of, so the original to fill that in, we had another 250 homes. And that's not true of 250 homes. So I, you know, it's a valid point, why here and why not there? Also, the people who represent the other taxing bodies were looking at this and saying, I think that's too much. So, you know, take what you need, but not more than you need.
Well, if you're trying to collect the 100 bucks from each one of us, it's not enough for anything.
That was just a mathematical, I was just using it as a.
But I'm using that as an example because my taxes don't go down, they go up. And if they go up because of the value of my home, because all the houses are selling higher, so I get another 150 or 200 bucks for next year. And then you put a TIF on top of that, now I'm at 500 bucks.
And that's where I encourage.
And that's where I'm going to have a problem selling my house because I'm already priced in this area, pretty high taxes. Not that my taxes are super high, but people coming from Naperville or somewhere like that that may want to work at Facebook, you know, they're going to look at my taxes and go, why do I want to buy your house? It was built in 1946.
And that's where I would encourage you and everyone here, the levy season is coming up. So all the taxing bodies are going to start looking at what their budget's going to be, what their levy's going to be. How much money are they going to need from the community in order to operate, right? That discussion is one that we all need to be vocal in. That aggregate tax rate, when I said 11.5%, St. Charles, Geneva, they were at the 8.5%, 9%. Sycamore was like 9%, 9.5%. We were the highest in the region for what we were paying in property taxes. Next year, we're projecting we could be competitive or even one of the lower ones because of all the economic development going on on the south side. But we have to hold all of our taxing bodies accountable. You have to go to the meetings, you have to express it to your school board members, you have to express it to the Park District that this is important to you as much as you can to hold the taxpayer harmless. So this is probably, we could go for hours talking about this.
I want to change the subject one second. Language in this, language in there about building codes. I have a house that was built in 1946. I've done a lot of upgrades to the house over the years. But do I meet new building codes? Obviously not.
No, right.
And so the language seems pretty strong in this TIF on what building codes and you're supposed to be up to building codes. I'm very concerned about.
That would only be if you do a renovation on your property.
Yeah, we have something called the existing code and for residential. And you're changing out a couple receptacles, you're putting some hardwood flooring down. If you are doing the work, you're the homeowner, there's no permit, you're doing it now. You're not going to be made to rewire your whole house. If you want a GFI in your kitchen, you know, to prevent, you know, where water might create a shock and so forth. You know something about that, fine. If not, you hire an electrician to do it. That's a permissible thing, but it happens all day, all year. People do things just to keep their houses working nice and so forth. They buy a new appliance and they have, they want to get a little more on the circuit to it. That happens. We adopt new building codes about every nine years. And our biggest concern is in those buildings, I will tell you, we can't see everything that's being done all the time. It's where the general public comes in, commercial and industrial. We're concerned about residential too, obviously new. But when you walk into those buildings, you're assuming that somebody has taken care of your safety. They've had that in mind when they design the exits and the wiring and the plumbing and all the rest of that. In your own house, you want to do something, we've all done silly things where we should have had somebody else come in. If you want to do that, that's your castle. We don't go looking around to see, oh, what's that repair truck doing? But in any, in any case, this is not a, an invitation, an open opportunity for the city to come in and tell you, you got to redo this and redo that. You will come to us if you want to participate and you'll say, I see you have a priority for helping with roof repair. Is there anything in the budget this year for our neighborhood? Or as a gentleman said earlier, about stormwater is terrific because that's more than you usually want to spend on.
My concern is once language hits the bucks, you can't get it out.
So the language is in there because eligibility for a TIF district, one of the factors in a conservation district is that the properties, or properties in there would not meet codes. So like, for example, your house does not meet current code, as you indicated. And there are several, well, taking aside the grandfathering and all that stuff. But there are several houses in that district that wouldn't. And the point is, is that is an, one of the factors, one of 13 factors for a conservation district is to why this type of redevelopment financing would even be eligible. And then you could use this TIF redevelopment financing to, let's say, if you had private rehabilitation of your house, then you could use that to actually make it conform to the current building code standards, which would increase the equalized assessed value of your property and make it safer for the rest of the district. That's the purpose of TIF financing. But it's not there to say that you, you know, as the city manager said, that this is a way to require or force everybody to come up to code or to force everybody to get better property values. This is just a tool, a mechanism. It's not a tax to make more, you know, property value increase. It's just a tool, a mechanism to allow people to hopefully increase their property values. And if they increase their property values, then more money comes into the tax coffers. But that's not a tax increase necessarily. It's not a requirement that you get up to code. It's just a source, a pot of money to where you could use that money to get up to code.
So we had one very.
You're trying to help somebody else.
So we have one very successful, only residential redevelopment project under TIF in this town. It was called DeKalb Pond Fisk. It started in the early 90s and went through the 90s. You remember that? Used to be the old Elwood Flats we were talking about barbed wire here? Well, the Elwoods and the Gliddons brought in old lumber from the 1893 exhibition and made houses and flats to house their workers who were working in the wire factories in the late 19th, early 20th century. And that was fine at the time, better than maybe a lot of the Chicago houses. But 70 years later, not so good. So by 1990, porches were falling off. Many of them weren't habitable. I lived in the last one and it's still there as a student. And I was long out of there before TIF ever started. But there were also homes on the periphery of that, single family homes, that people, tradesmen who, you know, saved and they bought a house and there it was. And they needed some roof repair and they wanted to fix the stoop at their front door and the sidewalks and they wanted to get a new water line because theirs was lead or galvanized. And all those things happened. And we had a limited budget based on what had been accruing after about five years. But we put it all, all chips in on that. And you can drive by there today. Many of the people who bought those new houses, single family houses, are still living in them. And every once in a while, we get a note, like a Christmas card saying, I'm still in this house 25 years later. So if we can achieve that, and we have a, we have a track record on that. And we're not the only ones, a lot of other places do them. I think that's a plus. Finally, here's what you need to just come away with tonight. This tax money would otherwise be distributed to all the taxing bodies. And people around the town and people who are looking at our town to come and live and work often say, is there a city kitty, a pile of money that I can use? I need to fix, I have to re-insulate my house. I'm looking at a pretty good buy of, you know, a first home buyer type situation. And I have to say, no. So at least in one area that does qualify, according to state statute, we'll be able to pull some money and every year it replenishes itself for a period of time. Now, it doesn't have to be 23 years, which is what the state statute allows. We can hit our goals, fold the tent and say we did it.
I'm sorry, I got a quick one. So what doesn't, you know, TIF qualify? Like what wouldn't, you know, if somebody came to you and said, hey, can I use TIF money to, you know, fix this bedroom up, you know, there's, you know, like what doesn't qualify? You know, what doesn't qualify?
A lot of that qualifies, but here's the thing. A lot of that qualifies, but here's the thing, you have a budget, just like you have a household budget. So we'll say in a year, say the first year I mentioned, say it's 250,000. The next year it might be 300, 350,000 and it grows. But that's, that's all there is, there isn't anymore, or else you gotta go into some other city capital fund and that's, then we're back to where we started. We don't have such a fund for private rehab, except for our community development block grants, which are for persons who are in a certain income range and so forth. So, and, and there are some of those houses in this area and CDBG has been using this area, but that's what that's for.
Can I, can I note too, typically we'd only put like 25% of the money would be TIF money. And that's an arbitrary number, but that's typically what the city council has done. It's been about, we give 20...
Towards a project, you're saying?
Toward a project, yeah. We give about 25% and then the owner puts in their own, the rest of it. So, so there's substantial buy-in. You have to invest yourself before the city's gonna jump alongside that. And one of the things, you know, five years ago when we were having challenges with TIF and with the JRB, the city council really sort of leaned toward, I think the only one who was on council then was my, Alderman Verbic. But the city council was really leaning toward, hey, please bring us the big projects that are gonna have the big impact so that we can really transform this space.
So I, I want to be, I want to make sure with the timing of everything, the, doing a town hall that is feasible within the next 30 days, let's say 45 days, that won't jeopardize the timing that we've got with TIF and all that at this point? Okay, all right. All of you, hang on, hang on. All of you, I can't say enough about how awesome it is you coming out. We will have that town hall to give you a further opportunity. Nice thing about those two is city staff and some of us, we'll, we'll stay afterward. If you have those one-off questions or one-on-one, or you don't want to come up to the podium, raise your hand on something, we'll allow some of that discussion afterward. But we will commit to making sure we inform you when that next meeting was gonna be. Hopefully we can do it in your neighborhood, but worst case, we could do it here again. And it'll be specifically around and we'll take the time we need to get through all the questions. So I know more are gonna come up over time, you're gonna hear some more things. But I really want to make sure that this is gonna be a collaborative effort. This is your neighborhood and we want to get this right. And that is gonna be the goal, I know I'm speaking on behalf of council, is we want to get this right for all of you. Because that in turn will benefit the city of DeKalb overall. The last point I wanted to make too, we've got a, you can stick around, but the next resolution is just approving the timing of the next public hearing, I think it is. So you can stick around for that, but like I tell everyone, you don't have to stay. I know you're all busy, you've taken a considerable amount of time out tonight in order to come out and find out more and I appreciate you for that. And don't forget, you can Google Mayor of DeKalb, Illinois, Google City Manager, or any of your older people and we're happy to find out even additional information before that town hall. So, yeah, with that, yes? Yeah, so...
We'll, we'll do a mailing, we'll do a mailing.
Just like we did for this one, so a mailing, go out, we'll put it... Yeah, and if you don't follow the city of DeKalb's Facebook page, I know not everyone's on Facebook, but we also have a email newsletter that goes out once a month. It's phenomenal. It, it has a lot of really good information in there. And Scott Zach at the city does a great job communicating a lot of things that are happening. But Bill, hey Bill, can we commit, we'll put that also on our Facebook page, we'll notify it there and we'll put it in the newsletter as well. But we will have a mailer, just like what you got here, that comes to your house, letting you know when the time and date of that's gonna be. Sound good? All right, all right, thank you.
Everybody's on equal, equal level here when it comes to a public hearing, so...
It's a public meeting, it's not a public hearing.
That's right, public, but it is branded on the agenda, it's a public hearing, so I want to make sure. What's that?
We're, we're good.
No, but the Alderman also spoke several times during the public hearing as well, so equal time, so...
We need to move on though, Mark, we've got a lot to do.
One last comment, I'm gonna, since Mr. Nicholas brought this up about that area in the donut, he said that that was originally part of the original plan and it now, it's now part of the center of the donut. And the reason that's probably, and maybe you can tell me why, that the other taxing bodies didn't like that idea, is probably, you kind of advocated for my point, is because that money will be lost to those taxing bodies that, as far as the increment. So that is probably the reason why they said, hey, this part of the donut cannot belong in the TIF area. So the fact that they wanted to shrink it a little bit is kind of a canary in the coal mine here, you know, that they're gonna lose money because of this expansive, this is a, this is a hu... I think this is the largest TIF area I think I've ever seen, area-wise, so...
No, no, I mean, the original TIF...
I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Yeah, we will. The original TIF in terms of land area was a quarter of the city, TIF 1, and that just closed a couple of years ago. So no, it's not, it's, it's not even as, as much in terms of acres as TIF 2 was years ago, so, yeah.
All right, with that again, thank you everyone.
I'll reserve my final comment for the next agenda item.
This was a great discussion, appreciate you coming out. Like I said, you don't have to, you don't have to stick around if you don't want to. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:16 PM. All right, moving on to agenda item I, considerations, we have none. Moving on to agenda item J, resolutions, we have public comment for that, and it is Mr. Charba.
This will be very short. Premise?
TIF, if you Google TIF districts, and this kind of goes contrary to what Carolyn said, the first thing you see when it comes to disadvantages is TIF districts are, and this is quote from an article, it might even be the same article you referred to. "TIF districts are considered inherently unfair as they pick winners and losers in the local economy by exempting certain businesses for taxes. The burden to pay for essential services instead falls to other businesses and to citizens. These additional tax burdens slow the growth of other businesses and reduce spending from citizens."
All right, so Resolution J1, Resolution 2024-092, establishing a time and place for a public hearing to consider the redevelopment plan and project for the South Fourth Street TIF redevelopment project area. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Walker, city manager.
Okay, the council has at your desk, they have a lot of paper there. But one is, just one sheet, a little yellow bar at the top, that's called TIF schedule. This is the, the schedule of various meetings and notices that are relating to what we've been discussing here since we opened the meeting. And one of those things that by law we're supposed to do, no less than so many days and no more than so many days before the public hearing, which will happen at the end of October, October 28, is to provide a resolution establishing the time and the place. So that's what this does. And you'll be seeing more of these at subsequent meetings of this nature.
Questions or comments, council? Hearing none, roll call please.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Resolution 2024-092 passes. Number two, Resolution 2024-093, authorizing an architectural improvement program, AIP, economic incentive for the DeKalb Elks Lodge at 209 South Angleton Road in the amount of $25,000. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Powell, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a non-TIF grant. This is a program we set up a couple of years ago. It's funded by the Fund 400, our general capital fund. And this is to take care of a portion of the cost of the removal of an old parking area and a replacement with new asphalt. And the, the, the application was in order. The, the project is, is a good one. It serves not only this particular property, but there's, there's a veterans memorial just to the north end of this that is a public gathering place now. So it serves people coming in and that's the contribution from the, the club to, to that purpose. So we recommend the funding, they're, they're entitled to reimbursement to the 50% level. However, our cap on the AIP program grants is 25,000, as was mentioned here earlier. So that's what we're recommending to you tonight.
Any comments or questions, council? Hearing none, roll call please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Recusing myself.
Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Resolution 2024-093 passes. Moving on to agenda item K, ordinances, second reading, we have none. Agenda item L1, ordinance, ordinance 2024-039, approving the final development plan for the Town Place Suites and Fairfield Inn Hotel at 902 Peace Road, Peace Road Hotels LLC. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Powell, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Pramit Patel is here, who is the developer and will be the owner of this particular property. You may recall, it's a little over a year ago, back in May of '23, that the council approved the rezoning and a preliminary, preliminary plan for the construction of the, the four-story Marriott branded hotel. It's gonna have 120 rooms and would be located at 902 Peace Road. In that same action, the, the council asked that we bring back a final development plan prior to any building permit being issued. The developer is ready to apply for that building permit and so we've had an opportunity at the staff level to look at this and it comes to you with a full recommendation from the staff and also from the planning and zoning commission, and we recommend your approval.
Questions or comments, council?
I got one.
Alderman Walker?
Do you mind if I get a free night when it's done? Don't answer that, just a joke, on the record, just a joke.
Yeah, you want to be on the record for that one. Alderwoman Zazada?
How big's the swimming pool gonna be? I just...
Come up to the mic if you don't mind, Pramit.
I, I think I stayed in a place in Minnesota recently that had a really cool, like, central swimming pool style with like a space around it that almost felt like a water park and it was like dramatic, like outdoorsy and it was really nice.
Okay, yeah, no, this is gonna be whatever the... It's not gonna be outdoors, unfortunately for Illinois, but it is, it's gonna be bigger than the Hampton or the Home too because there's more rooms. So Marriott and Hilton requires a certain size pool based on the number of rooms you have.
I stay in these a lot and they're phenomenal hotels, they're functional. They provide everything you need, great amenities, but no water park and water slides. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's simple, but very, very nice. Yes, Alderman Larson?
I just have a question, so you have that, that up there. When I was looking, doing my homework today, is that bumper to bumper still gonna be there and the gas station and everything?
Yes.
Okay, because it, it kind of like overflowed, like however it was in our background, I was like, they're not getting rid of that, so thank you, okay.
Yes, Alderwoman Zazada?
Sorry, and I apologize if I missed it, but are you gonna have electric car chargers?
Yes, they are now required by the bigger brands like Marriott and Hilton. I think we're gonna have four with the room to grow to eight.
Awesome, awesome.
Any others? Well, you continue to invest in our community, I, I have to applaud you. It's just great and bringing a major brand like this, right off the interstate, we'll call it right off the interstate, but right off the interstate, I think the use is gonna be incredible with all the events, all the things going on at Northern Illinois University, to have these additional rooms and to give people more options. I think it's gonna be very successful for you, but it's gonna be a huge benefit to the city of DeKalb. So appreciate you continuing to look to the city of DeKalb to make all your investments, sir.
Sure, you're welcome, thank you.
All right, any other comments, questions, oh, Alderman Larson?
Well, and just, and that's saying, just a, a side note, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, so many things were out of the running because we don't have enough hotel rooms.
Great point.
Even when you count through Elgin and Rochelle. So this will open the door for many more things, so thank you.
Definitely, even with hotel rooms are available, we lose guests that are Marriott points guests, right? They go to Naperville and they, they work here. So this will keep that tax money here in DeKalb. Thank you. Thanks.
All right, roll call then.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance 2024-039 passes on first reading, I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Walker, seconded by Alderwoman Zazada. Hearing any comments or questions at all? None, roll call please.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Second reading has been waived, ordinance 2024-039, and let's give a round of applause to Mr. Patel. And like I tell everyone, there's no reason to stick around, I know you're a busy man, so feel free to go on about your night. All right, moving on to number two, ordinance 2024-040, authorizing Northern Illinois Gas Company, DBA Northern Gas, Nycor Gas Company, its successors and assigns to construct, operate and maintain a gas distributing system in and through the city of DeKalb and approving a letter of agreement concerning the term allocation without charge to the city of DeKalb. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Walker, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Kevin Gazala, who's the regional manager of Community Affairs for Nycor, for your patience and probably edifying conversation we've had to this point. So this is pretty, pretty straightforward. The city's had a franchise agreement with Nycor Gas. Obviously, we have nearly, nearly every property served by natural gas services provided through Nycor. And the franchise is expiring within about a year. It's not unusual for us to approach a conversation about a negotiation of a new franchise. These types of franchises for, for major utilities, such as Nycor, ComEd, that use our rights of way, are heavily regulated by the state of Illinois and by interstate commerce and so forth. So there, there are some areas that we can discuss and one was the franchise agreement term. It could have been 50, we lobbied for 25, which is what we've had. And there's another thing that as a quid pro quo for that, for, for several franchise agreements previous, the, the company provides what they call an annual term allocation, which is natural gas supplied without charge to our municipal government buildings. And that is included in the ordinance that's before you tonight. We recommend your approval.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance 2024-040 passes on first reading. Would you like us to...
Yes, please.
...see if we can waive that second? Okay, I would take a motion to waive second reading on this one?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Powell. City manager, any questions, comments on that? Council, questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2024-040. Moving on to number three, we do have particip, public participation, Mr. Mark Charba? Or, yes, that's all three.
Much anybody else here? Problems with this ordinance. This ordinance specifically names an individual and that is highly unprofessional and highly uncalled for. I realize our city manager has a vendetta of some sort against the previous city clerk. You don't name an individual in an ordinance, that is highly inappropriate. And to classify his duties as derelict, let's give everybody a little bit of history. Now, granted, I'm not gonna say our previous city clerk did a great job, I will not say that. However, he did attempt to show up for his job at his very council and our mayor, who's running for reelection, said, hey, city clerk, we're gonna get rid of the city clerk report, which was part of what we used to do before, to allow the city clerk to present his or her findings to the public. Said, no, we're gonna, we're gonna shrink your, shrink your contribution right there on the spot. Very first meeting when the mayor took office. Second or third meeting, when the city clerk showed up to take role and attendance, count the votes. The city clerk said, the city man, I'm sorry, the mayor said to the city clerk, even though he showed up to do his duty, we're not gonna let you do your duty, even though the voters elected this person to do so. That was highly inappropriate. Every past city clerk, either elected or appointed, I've spoken with, has told me about the toxic environment at city hall on the part of the mayor and the city manager. I certainly hope this resolution, when it comes forth to the voters, that the voters still say, we want the elected city clerk. Folks that are watching at home, the elected city clerk is the only position... Folks that are watching at home, the elected city clerk is the only position that these people in this room cannot control. They want control of this office, they want control of the city seal. The city clerk answers to the public, not to this council. And zeroing out the salary, which seems punitive, you could get someone who's running, who would do a fantastic job if they are elected, but we're not even gonna give them the chance. You are assuming, Mr. Barnes, that everybody, Mr. Nicholas, that everybody in this city is incapable of holding this office. Out of the 40,000 plus people we have living here, that each and every one of you is not qualified for this job because we say it is. This is absolutely ridiculous. And then to Boots, they're gonna take the money and give raises to everybody who's elected in, in April. Absolutely ridiculous.
All right, so number three, which is ordinance 2024-041, providing for an increase or decrease in the salary of the elected officers of the city of DeKalb for the terms of office beginning in May 2025 and May 2027. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Walker, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. On July 22nd, the council had an opportunity to consider compensation for those elected officials that would be taking office after the municipal elections in April 2025 and the council gave by consensus some direction to the city manager and I've returned with some, an ordinance, which I think is consistent with your direction. There are two pieces to it. One is that the, the current base salaries for the mayor and the alderpersons would be augmented with a modest annual cost of living adjustment. Some, some percentages were kicked around, about two and a half percent, but it's better in terms of, in conformance with state statute to, to reflect an actual number. And so the chart here is as close as I could get on the whole to, in the time I had to, to hit that two and a half percent. And the other piece of it is to zero the annual compensation to the city clerk. It's not recommended and the council did not recommend it. We changed the present assumption of the clerk functions by our executive assistant, which as we've heard a presentation here recently, it's remarkably professional and consistent with what that, those duties are supposed to be.
Council, questions or comments? Yes, Alderwoman Zazada?
Um, I guess I just wanna clarify a few things real quick on this. So if we zero this out, there is no opportunity to change it. Okay, so when, when are we putting out the ordinance deciding on whether or not, allowing the community to, to decide on whether or not we have a city clerk? That's next.
It's a referendum in November.
In November, okay, and so...
So it's still in doubt what that result will be and...
Right.
So it could be that if it's, if the answer is yes, to make it appointed rather than elected, then it's a moot question. If it's, uh, if it's no, then there might still be somebody running for that position and then what's recommended is the, since, since there won't be, frankly, we've been, all the duties that have been historically charged as city clerk have really been done by our current executive assistant for the last 10 years.
Sure. So, um, we would not though have the opportunity, should the public decide to still have this an elected position, we would not have the opportunity to change this at that time because it would be too close legally speaking...
Right.
...to the time. Yeah, so I guess my only hesitation then in that context is I, you know, and I understand all the struggles, I've been here for all the struggles, but I, I think that the salary for that position should remain as it is until after it has been decided by the public whether or not we still maintain that position.
Alderman Walker?
I need some legal advice with this one, so how would we go about that?
Yeah, you can't, I mean, you, the compensation, the salary for the city clerk has to be set 180 days before the city clerk's term of office, so it would be impossible to either put it at zero or, or keep it now or at what the current level is depending on what the referendums are, referendum result is. So you have to decide now unfortunately.
Before the referendum is what I'll say, right?
So you're saying that the money would be allocated, that 8,000, say if the community decided that the position no longer existed, the money would still be allocated for the position and then it would go to no one?
Correct. It would, you would have approved a salary for 8,000 for an elected official that would not exist, so...
Which I don't think is a huge harm because in the end we keep the money if that, if the community decides that.
Can we put it in the tooth?
Alderman Perkins?
So if, if we were to make it zero then, it would go, it would be an elected position that's a volunteer position then, right?
Any other comments or questions? No? Alderman Larson, sorry.
Don't make me fall on the floor again. Of, since like 2009, even the elected clerks didn't finish out their terms, so I'm, I'm leaning towards making it a zero dollar amount. And, and I don't know if this is part of it, but I don't want that 8,000 tied into salaries for people up here. That's a separate thing. This should just be talking about for the budget and I'm just like, I think, without saying too much, that's what I think.
So Mayor, just to clarify, I think it's, it's, this is consistent with what you're saying. If you look at the totals, if the council approves this, then you'd, you'd be spending less by almost 8,000 than you were if the clerk was still in, in office and serving.
Alderman Walker?
Hey, I'm with, you know, we're, we're doing good. I'm with the alderperson, Larson. Listen, it is what it is. We've had, had some not so good city clerks. That's just what it is. It's like, you know, we're just playing around with this. Let's not play around with it. No one's running for it, you know? One person was on the, you know, on the, the ballot last time. I just think we're tired of playing around, you know? We need to have our stuff in order. Somebody's doing it, she's doing a, you know, excellent job. I feel comfortable giving her my information when I went to get on the ballot, so I think we should go in that direction and I'm all for this 100% and I'm not nowhere near the middle. I'm for it 100%.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
No.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Ordinance 2024-041 passes on first reading. I take a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Walker. Comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Larson?
So just to be clear on what we're voting on, that this proposed salary part is not what we're voting on. We're voting on, on making it...
It's all of it.
All of it, all of it.
Yeah.
So we're, so this vote is for us taking a pay raise?
Yes.
And only the, only half, right?
Yeah, only the half of being...
Only the half that are up for election soon.
And I can't remember what the percentage works out to, but it's less than two and a half percent, I think.
Yeah.
Is what it really, when you look at the dollars themselves. And again, that was all about having some sort of cost of living increase, so if we're saying the aldermanic position's worth X, every year, what we have been doing is not having that increase, so because of cost of living, you actually make less and less and less and less. And Alderwoman Zazada's point on, you know, funding for, if you needed daycare, whatever, for council members, it might help make it a little more accessible. Cuz I don't think any of us here are really concerned about the two point whatever percent. It's more of just a long-term thing that, hey, if you're an elected official, you'll at least always make this certain amount of money despite the cost of living increases. Alderwoman Zazada, do you have anything?
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say, to be clear from last time, I am in support of that portion and I think it's, I think it's a well-designed structure to continue those increases to make it a practical opportunity for people and accessible, as you said, Mayor.
And, and our increase doesn't happen, everyone has to get reelected. It doesn't affect anyone right now unless you get reelected and then that's the new pay going forward. You have a question?
Again, I wanna clarify as well. The two issues are not connected to me.
No.
It's, we're not taking the money out of the city clerk's pocket and putting it in our pockets. Regardless of how that's presented and some people speak about it, that is not the issue.
Correct, absolutely. All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
No.
Larson?
No.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Bye-bye.
Second reading has been waived ordinance 2024-041. That gets us to number four, ordinance 2024-042, amending Chapter 50 Citizens Environmental Commission, Section 50.01, Establishment, and Section 50.02, Membership, as it pertains to reducing the number of regular members from eight to six. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbeck, seconded by Alderwoman Larson, City Manager.
Uh, the, the background pretty much tells it, we've, we've had trouble getting a quorum for this particular commission and, and one way to address it in the short term is, is to slightly reduce the, the minimum needed for that quorum and while maintaining the four ex officio and reducing from eight to six, that would make it still one of the largest volunteer bodies of all of the 12 commissions and committees that we have supporting conversation in our community on a particular topic. And the four not-for-profits, I'm gonna forget one, the county NIU, Ruth, help me a little bit, can you think? Anyway, so roughly distributed of, of bodies that we work with in talking about environmental concerns.
You're only like the Water Reclamation District's on there as well.
KWRD.
Yep.
But I'm missing one.
Yep.
Park, uh...
Yeah.
Okay.
Alderman Larson, do you have any? Since you're at almost every one of those meetings.
We haven't had meetings lately because we know going in, there's not a quorum, so and, and a lot of the new chair, Julie, has been fabulous, yes, head of Trash Squirrels and has some great ideas and stuff and so it's kinda sad that we haven't been able to have meetings, so I think we would benefit from what this commission could do.
Awesome. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Ordinance 2024-042 passes on first reading. I take a motion to waive second?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Verbeck. Comments or questions on that? Hearing none, then roll call please.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2024-042. Moving on to agenda item M, Reports and Communications, Council Member Reports. Walker, you wanna pick us off?
Oh, uh, yeah.
Who?
Yeah. You, sorry. Alderman Walker?
First of all, I wanna thank you and City Manager Nicholas for putting that proclamation on for me for the senior citizens. Not to get into it too much, but, uh, you know, there's been a couple that has passed away that I've delivered to for a long time here in DeKalb, one being John Larnar. He, uh, he kinda challenged me to be more engaged. He, uh, he just challenged me to be more engaged in, you know, the town I live in and kinda made me grow up a little bit and understand that everything wasn't about John Walker, it's about, you know, the town I live in, so thank you guys for putting that on for him.
Alderman Verbeck?
Airport Advisory Board Meeting tomorrow night, 7 o'clock. Looking forward to it, as always.
Alderman Perkins?
Alderman Walker, thanks for answering the challenge, Norport.
Alderman Larson?
Just wanna thank everybody in the city. Corn Fest happened again this, this past weekend and it was just, it was a great time. I mean, the setup, the street closures, the take down, I mean, they were still cleaning up the parking lot here, washing them all down, so it, you wouldn't even know the crowds happened and it was a great, weather, great time.
Alderwoman Zazada?
I was really sad to miss Corn Fest this weekend because I had hip surgery and I'm recovering and I plan to schedule a ward meeting after I'm in a good spot in recovery.
I'll definitely agree, Corn Fest was phenomenal. The crowds were packed. I went there Saturday night. It was standing room only. Chief, I think it was pretty uneventful overall. I mean, you get a festival with tens of thousands of people showing up or whatever the total is, you're always gonna have something, but ultimately resident before the meeting started told me, being downtown Corn Fest, it was like, uh, there was just, everyone was talking to each other, talking to strangers, just the overall feel and attitude of it was better than other years that they've been and, and I felt the same way going down too. So I gotta give huge credit to the Corn Fest Board that puts this event on because it's not a city event, it is a nonprofit that puts this event on and they do a Herculean task trying to get all those people, all those vendors, all those musicians to come and put on an event that lots of people just go and have an absolutely wonderful time at. And then I also gotta give our firefighters, our police department and our street department a lot of kudos because that, that's also a large event for them to be able to put on to make sure everyone's safe, to make sure everyone's communicating well and make sure our streets and everything are protected. And they do a phenomenal job and you're right, you come Monday morning, it's like nothing happened over the weekend. It's incredible what they do. And then also another big event happened, we did a new dedication for a veterans mural on the back of the cornerstone building that faces Van Buren Plaza and it's just a beautiful, it's just a beautiful mural recognizing our veterans and, you know, what they've gone through, what they've done. And I think, Scott, the title of the painting is What These Boots Have Seen. I would encourage everyone, walk into Van Buren Plaza and just take a look at that thing. It'd be hard not to have a little bit of an emotional connection and during the presentations of the mural, I know a lot of us have been focusing on veteran suicide. The numbers that Be The One are promoting out there right now is it's 18 to 22 veterans every single day commit suicide. Myself, I've had family members that have, or a family member that took his own life of Vietnam vet at, you know, 65 years old. I mean, it's just, it's just such a tragedy. So this is just our way of bringing some more recognition to vendors and getting some exposures, especially to groups like Be The One and I would encourage everyone, if you know a veteran, be a little engaged in their life, see what's going on because you have no idea the, the burden they may still be carrying with them, even if it's years after being in the service. Outside of that, I'll leave the rest. Outside of that, I'll leave the rest. Yes, oh, oh, Alderman Powell, oh, I'm so sorry! I saw the blank chair and I stopped.
I had a chance to attend Corn Fest as well, it was great. I also recently moved my, relocated one of my businesses to DeKalb, 2331 Sycamore Road, so now I'm actually in business in DeKalb, not just Sycamore, and I have a ward meeting this Wednesday, August 28th, at 5:45 PM at First Congressional Church, 6:15 North First Street. That's about it.
Awesome. Sorry about that, Alderman Powell.
No, you did that.
City manager, do you have anything?
Just to second what some of you have said about the tremendous work that our various city departments do to make, help make, to assist with and collaborate with the Corn Fest Committee to make it a nice festival for our community.
All right, with that, then, we'll move on to agenda item N, Executive Session. It asks for a motion of approval to hold executive session in order to discuss the purchase or lease of real property as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2 C5. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Powell. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
All right, with that, our regular meeting is now in recess.